Good evening. Welcome you, I welcome everyone here to the Moscow City Council meeting on August 21st. And I will have Julia give the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It worked.
Sorry, just a little surprise to start our evening.
Okay, I'm Maureen Lafflin and I'm acting as the mayor today, so bear with me. Here we go. Starting it out, let's start with the consent agenda. And I wanted to say that the issues that came before the Public Works and Finance Committee, many of those issues are now on the consent agenda. If anyone here wants to pull anything from that, you're free to do that. If not, you just need somebody to move it.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Haley.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
And Drew.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the regular agenda. I'll leave where has one of these in front of them. There are no mayor appointments issue today. We're going to move to public comments in the mayor's response period. That takes us some total of, we limit that to 15 minutes. Everyone who wants to speak has three minutes to speak. And anyone from the public that wants to talk about anything that's not currently on the agenda or before the Board of Adjustment may stand up here and tell us what you want to share with us. Don't rush. Okay, moving on. The first issue is the proposed lot division of a 10-acre parcel located directly north of the current terminus of Warbonnet Drive. Amy Hendrick.
Good evening, Acting Mayor and council members. Before you tonight, as you stated, we have a lot division of a 10-acre parcel that's directly north of the current terminus of Warbonnet Drive. The applicant, Warbonnet LLC, is proposing to split a lot into four separate parts. The first lot would be 3.24 acres. The second lot would be 1.70 acres. The third lot of 1.70 acres and the fourth lot of 1.39 acres. Included in this is parkland dedication of 20,600 square feet and the extension of Warbonnet Drive to the northern property boundary in accordance with the condition of the 2022 rezon of the subject property. This is an aerial photo of the subject property. As you can see, the terminus of Warbonnet Drive. This is a photo of the current property, if you're familiar with that location. A little bit closer up of the subject property, if you're familiar, LDS Church is here. This is the Gritman Medical Center and Walmart here. Current zoning of the property is zoned R4. And within the R4 multifamily residential zoning district, lots are required to be a minimum of 5,000 square feet with a lot width of minimum of 50 feet. All proposed lots meet these minimums. And here is a visual of how these parcels would be split. As stated, the 3.24 acre parcel, both of the 1.7 acre parcels, the 1.349 or 1.39 acre parcel and the parkland dedication over here. This is a survey provided by the applicant showing what was on the previous slide. Parkland dedication, lot divisions of land that weren't previously contributed to parkland dedication requirements is subject to parkland dedication. In the R4 zone, 9% of that of the net developable land is dedication is required. That would equate to 0.76 acres of parkland dedication in this case. The applicant has proposed a 0.47 acre parkland with grading of the park and the access pathway. On June 29th of this year, the Park and Rec Commission considered the proposal and recommended approval of parkland dedication proposed as a part of this application. This is showing a closer up image of that parkland tract as well as the grading plan proposed. And this is a photo of where that parkland would be situated back here in this, in this back corner. As you can see, the topography is a little bit challenging. So tonight's recommendation, because the Public Works and Finance heard this on the August 14th, Public Works and Finance Committee meeting, they recommended it for approval. So tonight's recommendation again would be for approval of the lot division with no conditions. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Sandra.
Not exactly a question because we asked this before. I know that when we were looking at this in our committee meeting, we really wanted an explanation of why that parkland was halved and you gave a great reasoning for it. Could you just kind of go into the topography just a little bit more and explain why it's smaller?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So due to the challenging topographies, you can see the lot kind of slopes up here. Oops, wrong direction. The lot kind of slopes up in this corner back here. And so in lieu of an additional amount of parkland dedication, the developer has agreed to provide the grading for that and the, and the access pathway as well.
Because you wouldn't really have ended up with much pathway because of how sloped it is, correct?
Typically, or grading.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be a lot of grading involved.
Oh.
In most situations.
And you said that the Parks and Rec Commission did meet on this and
They did.
And they're good?
They did, yes. They recommended for approval, I think it was June 23rd of this year.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Does it save us some money if they do all the?
Yes.
This is a good thing to know, too.
Yeah.
It might also show it on the record.
That's right.
Amy, is this a accurate like depiction of the buildings that would be there?
I can't speak necessarily to the development as it's not being completely proposed yet. I do know there is a representative for the applicant here that may have some idea about the phasing and what's proposed at what, at what particular time.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
So directly north of this lot?
Yes.
It says government lot? Is that like out, like is that a name government or who owns directly north of that?
I'm not sure of the ownership of the, the lot to the north.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah.
It is outside of city limits, I'll say that.
Okay.
So it is not incorporated within the city at this time.
Gotcha. Is there an easy answer?
For recall, I think the property to the north, so it was the, it was all part of the Montgomery Estate. There was 10 acres that was set aside that was allowed to be developed. The remaining property is placed into a conservation trust.
Got it.
I believe the Druffel family may currently own the ag land to the north of the property under question.
Okay.
But it's, it was part of the Montgomery Estate. The portion north this parcel was just placed into a conservation easement.
And I.
Government loss is a historical land description.
Ruby, I, I just was thinking in terms of as we are not running out of directions to grow, but if we're seeing development in this direction, being mindful of what that means if we don't see future development that is big enough to warrant a parkland dedication, just big picture thinking, so.
Any other questions? Is someone here to talk for the applicant, the Warbonnet LLC?
Scott Becker.
Identify yourself, Scott Becker.
Hi, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. Amy did a great job introducing the, the project and yeah, none of the, the other phases. Phase one is proposed and is in design and, and at the city for review, but the other phases have not been completely designed. We laid it out just to make sure we knew that it would work for some future townhouses or something. It'll be a little bit higher density with the R4, so, but those would be single family ownership, so.
And you'll come back before us before that?
Oh, absolutely.
Everybody knows that, that's.
But yeah, because like I said, we're, we're at that stage now that with the interest rates just going out of control and the inflation, the owner of the property couldn't bite off the whole chunk at one time. So that was the, that was the reason for the division.
Any questions, Scott?
Your Honor.
Yes.
If I might just, just clarify that the development will not be coming back for the council. It's already zoned. This is a lot division, so it'll just be developed, assuming it's developed for uses by right underneath the zoning code, it's unlikely it would come back for the council for review.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sandra.
I approve, I move that we approve the lot division. I do approve and I move that we approve the lot division request with no conditions.
I'll second with a request, with a question for staff, if that's okay. Just to confirm, I'm trying to remember as I drive by there, I feel like there's a stretch of Warbonnet that doesn't have sidewalks, but I could be making that up. Any conversation about, how am I trying to say this? It's been a long day. The developer would be held.
So Warbonnet has sidewalks, I believe, on both sides.
Is it on both sides? I can't remember on the Applebee's sides if it goes all the way down.
I don't remember either. Let's look back at the.
I think it does.
I think it does.
I kind of think it does.
The developer would be required to put sidewalks in as the road does extend?
Oh, you.
It's not the greatest, it's not zoomed in. It looks like they're on the, the eastern side.
Yeah.
But maybe not on the west.
They're both on east and west.
Are they?
Yep.
Okay, I just couldn't remember. I.
So will they be putting it in on the east and west as well?
It will, it will continue with the extension of Warbonnet.
Cool. So I, my, my second still stands, I just sidewalks. Thank you, Amy.
No other questions?
Uh-uh.
Drew.
Yes.
Julia.
Aye.
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 Yes, approved. Okay.
Good job, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Dave Barber is going to speak with us about the Moscow Sisters, Sisters, Moscow Sisters Cities Association. Thank you. Go Dave.
Yeah, we sure can.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Hello, I'm, I'm Dave Barber. Is this I?
Yep.
Representing Moscow Sister City. And I want to talk a little bit about what we, what we do. But first of all, I want to say thank you to you representing the city, all of you, because the city of Moscow has supported our association since, I believe, 1986, which was the year that Marty Baron, who was a council member, and Mary Voxman went down to Nicaragua to make the final arrangements with the mayor of Bialkotmen, which is our sister city in Nicaragua. So we very much appreciate it and I don't think we have said so publicly except in the newsletter for, I don't know how long, but it's not a small matter and it gets bigger every year. It's now up to $600 and that's, that's our dues to the Sister City International. Do we want to keep that going forever? We don't know. I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But I wanted to mention also who it is who makes, people who make the decisions about what we do. And I gave you the list of the, the Board of Directors down below with a note that we have lost a number of, three of our, our really good and long-term members to either death or illness. And, and that's been very unfortunate. We have added two recently, Bill Voxman is one, you probably know Bill, and Lena Fort. Lena is going into her junior year in Moscow High School. And if you know Lena, you know she's a energetic fountain of ideas and a very, very valuable will be for us. Moscow Sister City, the city, the town is only about 7,000 people. It's right in the middle of the county and that's really what our relationship is. The county, the municipio total, totals about 40,000 people. It is right on the Pacific Ocean, the, the whole land and about 30 miles from the capital city of, of Managua. Okay, so what we, what we do, a sister city has got to consider contact with people to be supremely important. It's not easy to do in some situations, but this is what we have done over time. A number of people have gone independently to Nicaragua, to the, to the town. I've been there five times myself from 2007 to 2020. And a number, others have also, but the most important excursion of people from here to there has been three tours that Elizabeth Berlinger organized back in 2007, eight, 10, I think, taking 16 to 18 people at a time on a tour of the country, including the sister city. And that's a total of almost 50 people from Moscow who went to Nicaragua during that period. And those people have been, I think, the core of support for us since, since that time, which is great. The only problem is we're getting on, you know, and, and we're looking for, for new generations. So, okay, so we have not been able to bring very many people from there to here. That's obviously an expensive thing to do, but we have had three, there have been English teachers who have spent from two months to six months in Moscow, living with families and improving their English. And that has been, I think remarkably successful, but we have not done that for a while, but we're doing it next year again, and I'll get back to that in a minute. Online contacts, one of the good things about modern technology is you can, you can communicate very easily. Now I'm in touch with 20, 20 or 30 Nicaraguans and I can talk with them. I can text them on WhatsApp or Facebook or email, but WhatsApp is handiest. And in fact, we can talk over write or video chat. We have a chat group on WhatsApp also, which includes about 25 people, half and half from Moscow and, and Nicaragua. And so anyone can, can either listen or, or I mean just read other people's quotes or add them themselves. We have set up a contact list for people who individually want to communicate with someone individual in the other country. And that has worked fairly well, although it's difficult to maintain an ongoing conversation, but it can, it can be done. The, the teacher whose picture is here, who's coming next semester, has been taking a course, a graduate course in teaching and learning in Managua and has been sending a report more or less monthly to a group of about 50 people. And of those 50, 30 are Moscow people and 20 are, are in Nicaragua, but that's another kind of contact that has been quite successful, I think. So when she comes next, next year, next spring, a number of people will already know her and have some idea of what she does. We have a newsletter that you guys send out. Corey Oglesby, if he's still here, I haven't been in touch with him for a while, is the one who, who I work with to, to do that. And that goes to our members, there are about 160 members that we have. Membership is very loose in this organization. Basically, it means you're willing to accept, to receive messages. Some of our members are also donors and some aren't. But all of the money that, that Sister City takes in comes from, comes from donations. From the beginning, we have focused on education. And that was after a year or so when we weren't quite sure what to do, this is back in, in the early 1990s, but we have decided that our mission basically is to help support the schools and the, the students of Bialkotmen. We've done that in two ways. The first through the period of about 2014, we would, we would fund school repairs of different kinds or provide computers, public speaking systems. We have repaired toilets in three or four of the schools and we have erected a big water tower in one, that kind of thing. But about 2014, we decided that we would be more useful, be more productive to, to work with people rather than material things. And so we set up a system of scholarships and basically of those, there are two kinds. One is we, we award scholarships to students out of high school from the Bialkotmen area. This is the whole county, there are eight major schools, schools there. And they go to the university in Managua, which is about an hour's bus drive away. And that has been very successful. We've had, I think, a total of about 20 students that we have helped complete their education. There are five ongoing now, but the others, all except one, have completed their programs. And they're a really good group. I've, I've met them and they do, they've done very good work. The other, the parental grants, they're very small, they're $50. We have provided that kind of grant to about maybe the parents of about 300 elementary school children. And the idea there is that some of the people, especially up in the hills, are so impoverished that they can't afford the school uniforms, they can't afford the clothes or the backpacks or the school supplies. And so, and we were told that there are a number of, of children who actually did not go to school because their parents could not afford to send them there. So we have tried to help, help out in that way. So next spring, we are bringing this young woman, she'll be 26. She was in 2016, I, I met her, she was a freshman, she was one of our scholarship students. And she graduated in 2020 and has, since then has been teaching English in Managua. Unlike the first three teachers that we had, her English is quite good, it's, it's close to fluent. And one of her goals is to be around native speakers for a long enough time to almost, you know, almost become a native speaker herself. Her other goal is to learn the American system of education, our methods of teaching and learning, especially language learning. And she'll be working with faculty in the College of Education, Health, Social, Human Sciences next spring and hopefully a lot also at Moscow High School. And I will, I will lean on Lena to help us do that. She is very interested in, in doing that. Lena is the president of the high school Spanish club, I believe, and but as I say, she's, she's a powerhouse herself. So my final point here, and item D here, is the future is uncertain, let's say. And that's very largely because of the Nicaraguan government, which as I'm sure you know, has been for years, ever since Daniel Ortega took over again in 2006, been working toward a dictatorship and that was accelerated tremendously after the uprising of 2018. And it gets, it gets worse and worse. The government has banished, the estimate is over, probably over 400 non-governmental organizations, international organizations, and has really, really hurt, hurt the country. We are an NGO and we kind of fly under the radar. And basically what that means is that when we send scholarship funds to students, we don't want any bank to know because that could be a conduit to the government. We, I'm, I do this usually myself, I will send to the individual student or in some cases the school principal, the money by Western Union, which is a bit of a pain, but it, you know, it, it works. And so, but we've, we've had to, to resort to that, which means we don't have any contact with the government. And so in a sense, we're not able to do what we would like as a full-fledged sister city, but we are in touch with lots of people there and I think we're doing pretty good work. And, and I love to being able to contact them. I love the, just that interchange, which is, the, the problem is that not very many people can do that. I mean, I've, I've been there, I've met these people and so it's, it's easy for me, it's not quite so easy for someone less like, for example, a Moscow high school student to make a connection with a young person. That can be done, but it's, it's hard, but we, we are working on it. The last point about participation of younger generation, as I mentioned before, well, as you know, it's difficult for volunteer organizations to get people actively involved, but we are going to try to work on it and then we hope that Haley's visit here, which will be all, all of the spring semester, will help us generate more interest and enthusiasm, especially among people who are, say, younger than me, older than Lena, somewhere, you know, somewhere there in the middle. So that's basically what I wanted to say. I don't know, we, we haven't talked as an organization with you for maybe a decade and it was time, but basically I wanted to say thank you again to the, the city as a whole for, for being our support. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them on.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, I didn't know about this until you got involved with Alternative Giving Market of the Palouse. And I appreciate all the conversations we've had about the sister city because I've learned a tremendous amount about that and really have grown to admire the work you do with them. So I really appreciate you coming and explaining to all of us what it is you do. And I know it's no easy task, but I can, I can tell in your face every time we have talked, even when it's about dumb computer issues, that you have a tremendous love for what you do and it's, it's catching, so thank you.
Thank you.
Have you prepared the students at the high school that how hard it is to understand Nicaraguan-like Spanish?
Well, it's, it's a problem.
It is.
They, they, they like to forget the ends of ending sounds of words and that kind of thing, yes. But, but Haley is, is quite, quite articulate. I mean, she, people will have very little problem, I think, because she, she understands that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
The only thing I was going to add, yeah, I'm excited to see what it looks like to, see a teacher here and give her some of those tools to take home. That's really awesome. I also, through studying like the best and most successful means of foreign aid, like direct aid is one of the most, I really appreciate that there's not a lot of overhead in what you're doing as a sister city organization. Again, to clarify for the viewers, the avid audience in the room and the viewers at home, like we, what the city's role is, is to help support the actual membership dues to participate in a sister city organization. And what you are doing independently is direct aid for folks who need it. So thank you for making education accessible for folks who wouldn't have it otherwise. And yeah, it's, and I, I was going to ask, is KIA still a thing at the University of Idaho? Do we still do the, the KIA program?
That stopped pretty much with COVID.
I kind of, that's what I was, I had a couple of friends who participated and loved it and grew to love the sister city program through that.
Oh, I know, I know. That was a wonderful program. And if you know Luby, she ran it for years and of course she's, she's still on our board. We still are in touch with her, but she, you know, she spends half the year in Guatemala and half the year in Florida, so.
Yeah.
But she knows families and, and so I'm going to, I think she can help us find families who will want to host Haley next spring.
Yeah, lovely.
Any other questions? Thanks a lot, Dave. That was very helpful. Okay. Tony Bean, Ron, the Moscow Pullman Airport report.
Acting Mayor, Members of the Council.
You did catch how she said Moscow Pullman Airport, right?
That's okay. We're on that side of the border.
Yeah, the agenda's.
I agree. I'm with Maureen on that one.
So I'm not here to ask for money. You already wrote the check. But it's, the time, talking with the city supervisor, it's about time that we gave you a really comprehensive update about what's going on because people can see it. There for about six, eight months, nobody, nobody saw anything because it was the level where the aircraft is going to be. So if nobody saw any, any steel going up, well now you can definitely see it. Let's see if I can figure out how to drive this correctly. Okay, we started out, this presentation is going to be about the terminal itself and the site, the apron, all of the work that's there and then some air service things that we're trying to get done. But as we did with, with the runway and the realignment there, this is a regional issue and it, and we started out with the idea, we knew we have a problem. When we built the runway, we knew we had a problem with the terminal. But if you can't land the airplane, you don't need the building. So we started out with how should the building feel and a lot of individuals that were on the Terminal Advisory Committee from both sides. is what should it feel like? Because right now, we operate out of a box, and people get that. But if you had the opportunity to build it, what would you build? And what would you want the amenities to be? How should it feel? And these are some of the members that were on that advisory committee as we were going through the iterations of what this building was going to start out with. Collaborative partners, I can't, the partnerships, I can't say enough about this. This is the ribbon cutting in twenty nineteen. We're successful because we have huge partnerships. The cross-border partnerships are partnerships with every level of government, and the federal agencies, everything, public-private partnerships. We are rare in my industry. When people see that with two cities, two towns, two universities, and they're in two states that you would think politically are diametrically opposed, and we manage to get anything done is amazing. So people see that, but it is, this is the cornerstone of the quality of life that we enjoy in the region, is the collaborative partnership that comes from all of you. So this is a timeline, two thousand and seven, we started a master plan. We're about to go through master planning again, because now we've built the runway and we're building the terminal, what do we do with everything around it? But this is how long this has been going. We started, I started in twenty eleven, we started working on finishing the first, the second master plan, getting into terminal, getting through environmental. We cleared both projects in the same environmental, because we knew we needed to do both things. But the runway had to come first. The runway, we just, we just finalized the last grant for the runway, so we just finished. So the last grant has been completed with the FAA, and we're into twenty twenty-three. But this is a, just a basic timeline of, of how long this has been going. This is kind of an exciting slide. We gave this to Congresswoman Kathy McMorris Rogers on her visit, just kind of breaking down what the, what the timeline is at the bottom, but there's some exciting figures in here. Calendar year twenty twenty-two, we had seventy-five thousand passenger and planements, revenue passenger and planements, that is a record year. When I first got here, I believe in twenty eleven, it was, we were at thirty-two thousand people. So that's, that's seventy-five thousand people getting on an aircraft. That's that many getting off the aircraft, that's not meters and greeters and non-revenue passengers. Load factors, Seattle's load factor is, we're filling that aircraft over eighty percent. And the Boise load factor is over sixty-six percent, which that Boise flight just goes, that is local traffic, it is from here to Boise. And so the load factors are very, very positive. New building, three gates, three aircraft parking positions. We're trying to get a fourth, so we've got a congressionally-directed spending request in to try to get a fourth parking position. We need it. If we don't get it this time around, we'll keep working at trying to, to get there till we do. But this has full boarding bridges, posted, pre- and post-secure concession space, so you can get food, beverages, snacks, T-shirts, whatever they want to sell on either side, whether that's on the public side or the private side. And that's built into this building, a graphic of the building is up at the top, and then what you would see from the airside is on the other side of the, of the graphic there.
Can I ask a question, Tony?
Sure.
Is the drive for the fourth gate, like, specifically for more commercial options, or is it also to help accommodate, like, collegiate charter stuff?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, so we built this building knowing, because we're unique in that situation where we have collegiate charters. And we built the building where I can basically, and I'll show you when we get into the, the footprint, where we can split the building in two pieces. We literally can shut off one half of the building and run a private charter, a university charter that has its own screening, that's separate from TSA, because they can, they can choose which one they want to do. But it makes the building very flexible. But that's the reason for the fourth parking position, is what happens to us now. We could have two charters here, either football teams coming in or going out for both universities, and we could have a Boise flight and a Seattle flight on the ground at the same time.
So you don't want to disrupt your?
Yeah, it's trying to keep it as flexible as possible. The existing terminal, it's eight thousand seven hundred square feet. It's twenty-one percent of the space needs, the holdroom area. We don't have enough chairs in the holdroom. There's more chairs on the aircraft than there are in the holdroom. I talk about the gate up there at the, at the top left, I call that the Alcatraz Gate. It's effective, but people that see that the first time, they think they're coming through a prison. It doesn't look like a terminal. It's really effective, but it is not representational, it's not welcoming, it's not the Palouse, and it's not the reason, the region that we live in. Vehicle parking is a definite issue, because we, we added a whole parking lot behind the fire station. We thought we were good, when we filled that up, it was two weeks, and we were out of parking again. The layout, new terminal, this kind of gives an idea of scale of what the old runway and taxiway configuration was versus the new one. I've got an aerial that really does show this, how big of a site this actually is. But this was the concept when we started going through, and you can kind of get the idea of how much earthwork and all the things that we actually moved. We keep the graphic, because people forget, there's sixty-five-foot fills where the creek comes through. You can see between the, the representation, the graphics, with the taxiway and the runway. That's a creek going through there. And we put that all in a box and moved it. Project overview, kind of where it is with terminal. So this is a little weird. Existing terminals right here, this is the new site right here. I believe most everyone was here for the beam signing when we did the topping out ceremony. That was very, very impressive. But the new, new terminal building, that dark piece is that piece for that fourth parking position, which is a ground boarding position. But there will be no outside, it's bridges. So it's either a bridge to an aircraft or a bridge to the ground. So you're not, the idea of having to walk outside and walk a long ways through inclement weather, that's not gonna happen. You're gonna go in and out of the building.
Yay!
I'm kinda sad about that.
Her sight flat. Right?
I'm happy about it. People are really sad, I'm happy about it.
Right now, we're building the green, we're building half of the rental car lot that's to the right. We don't have the money for the other half. We're building the purple lot, so that's four hundred and fifty spaces. There'd be a portion of the blue that'll be administrative space if somebody wants to come, they've got business to do that's not with the airline, they have to do business with the airport itself. There'll be a small lot there. We're trying to generate the funds, but that's, it, it takes, FAA does not pay for parking lots. Anything that the airport generates revenue on, the FAA is not paying for. And so those lots are things that we've cut out. If we have the ability, as we're going through the project, to, to add, that's where we're gonna add. We took a lot of the, just regional inspiration, the colors, that went back to that advisory commission. What should this feel like? What should it look like? How should it be? So colors was that, the landscape was that, how do we make it, you know, representational of the Palouse? The movement in building form, you see it with the ICCU arena. This building has a very similar to feel, and also has the same contractor. Initial funding, this is, this was two years ago. We started out with the idea where the cities, both cities, were putting in two million dollars each. The airport is a million dollars cash. We started putting together, just like we did with the runway, we started getting partners and started putting things together. And then we took all of the federal funding that we have, and it scratched federal funding out of everywhere, and state funding from different places to put into this project. We're gonna be able to walk out of, out of the initial portion of this and the expansion portion of this with no long-term debt. And I think, I think the, the initial with the runway was two and a half, was it two and a half each city? So for four and a half million dollars of the investment of each city, it's a quarter billion dollars of investment. That's the actual where we sit. So here's the pricing iterations. We started out with phase one with the original building. Phase two was, was competitive grant funding through the federal government. And so we competed twice for bipartisan infrastructure law, and it's called Airport Terminal Improvement Program. We're the only airport of our size that were, was awarded funding both times. We got eleven point three the first year, we got six point, let's see, six point seven, or eleven point, was it eleven point seven and six point three the second year? So that funded, that gave us the expandability, because the building wasn't big enough, but we had to build what we could afford. So we, we started out with just cutting. Cut to where we could live within our means, and then we were able to get additional funding. So building costs right now, we're at sixty-three point four, and that's building and all of the site work. So that's the building, the parking lots, all of the infrastructure that's under the ground, and you'll see a lot of that. And then there's an apron, which is a separate project entirely, but you have to have a place to park the aircraft. And so the rules that go with the apron and the rules that go with the building are two different sets of rules. And so the apron is a separate project, and that's twenty-four point four. So right now, total project, we're eighty-seven point eight million in roughly. We're working on that phase two, seven point seven million is the target, and that is to take advantage of the six point three that the federal government has issued. Is, that's what we need to spend to make sure that we spend all of the federal funding. So if we don't spend it, it goes back in a pot and somebody else spends it.
And so is that a bigger challenge than, like, expiration dates for spending it? I'm trying to, like?
Yeah, we're not gonna have a problem with the expiration date.
Agree.
We're spending, and then, so this is a timeline here. Right now, we're gonna have the substantial completion of the original portion of the building will be done at the end of the year. So they'll be, we'll be on punch lists, and then we start into this west package and how that works out. But we're not gonna open the, we're not opening the terminal until we're ready to. There are a lot of things in this terminal building that are not in the existing terminal. It has baggage systems, it has the control devices where you're exiting, they automatically open and you go out. It has belt systems that go down, belt systems that go for all of your baggage and all of the things that get loaded and unloaded. It has gates, it has bridges, it has all of the things that we need to have for a modern facility. So there's training, there's, there's a whole bunch of things that need to happen with that. And then the other one that comes into play is winter. The, the apron is concrete, that there's no, there's asphalt underneath it, but concrete's going over the top. They're starting that here in the next week. And the worst thing that we could do is throw a bunch of chemical on concrete, because everybody's seen spalling concrete. Well, spalling concrete in aircraft is a bad idea. So we're gonna let that cure, we're probably opening the building somewhere in that March-April timeframe as soon as they can, they can finish enough of the west expansion to get the airline operational. But that way, we've done the training, we've done the testing, and we're not subjecting, subjecting the public to experience that nobody wants. We want to make sure that we know how it works before we go put it into play. And we already know how the existing building works. We've done that for lots of years, we know how that works. Projects comparison, existing terminal, this is just the upper floor. So this isn't the basement, but the, the piece that's in color is the existing terminal building. This is how, how much different that is. You're going from eight thousand square feet to about forty-seven thousand square feet. The lower level, everything that you see in purple is screening space, so it's the TSA suite. The purple on the top is where they're going to screen your bags, and then you've got baggage system where you see, it looks like there's two. It's built so we can start with one that's smaller, and as the building grows, that, that we can get a bigger system in there. Airline, ATO spaces, the yellow is airline ticket office. So that, the airline offices are in the basement, the ground support offices, where they keep all of the things that they need to ground handle aircraft. Everything in blue is baggage that is going out. Everything in brown is baggage that is coming in. So that belt system, you can see in gray, that kind of goes around, let's see, this one here that goes around like this, this comes up into the upstairs. So this thing's climbing as you're going. And it's amazing to watch Hoffman put it together, because they're doing it, it's called BIM modeling, and they're putting it in three D. So if they're off half an inch with a pipe, they know, and they'll make adjustments to that pipe, so they only put it in one way. The baggage, everything comes in, the baggage system where tugs will come in, this is all open space. And then they exit here and go service the aircraft. Public never gonna see this piece, other than tours.
And so, Tony, is that part of the challenge, remind me, most of this is not gonna be covered by a lot of the kinds of grants that we are able to get as an organization, right?
Right, we're using CARES money for the majority of this. So the way that this is done, and the way the FAA works it, so it's not, it doesn't come, become completely confusing, is this isn't public space, so the FAA doesn't cover it, CARES does. And certain things are covered, certain things are not. We've been able to, to work, there's seventeen separate grants, so then they all have separate rules. So there's a lot of calculus that goes into working this out. And Bill gets to sit in a meeting with, with me every month, going through how we're spending all this money with his counterpart on the, on the Pullman side, Mike Urban. But we've got this down to grants specific to, this grant is for paint. It's paint, steel, exterior cladding, and that's what the grant's for. Can't use it for anything else, it's very, very specific. But there's a proration. So the FAA takes everything, and then they look at the square footage, and you come up with the proration. Our proration right now is the building eligible for federal funds, for FAA funds, is eighty-three percent. The entrance road, the parking lots, all of the site work, that's eligible at about twenty-six percent. So a lot of the CARES funding is going towards the ineligible items, that's where we're putting the CARES funds. Because the CARES, CARES funds are treated as airport revenue, they have to be spent on the airport, and they have a clock on them. So by June of twenty twenty-four, they need to be spent. Well, they're gonna be spent, there won't be any dime left. The expansion that we're talking about is in the green. So we were able to expand the east side, this was going to be an outdoor space. So now we've moved the outdoor space here. So when you go through screening, if you want to sit outside, you're gonna be able to. So there's gonna be an area for that. And then this was the other additive piece, is the building stopped here, and we were trying to figure out what to do with this gate. So we were able to add this entire bridge, because we only had one, now we have two. And then we were able to add space, additional space, so we can, this is where the charter comes in, is there's a wall here that it can be accorded in, and a door. So we can open this up, it becomes part of the terminal. If we're gonna run a charter through it, and the rules are different, we'll, we'll close it, and we'll run the charter through here. And then administrative space is the great space off to the side.
Is that one of those spinny baggage areas that?
Mm-hmm, the carousel?
That's awesome.
Yep, so it's got an actual carousel.
That's awesome.
So it'll be like a real airport, almost like Pinocchio. Entrance to security, what you're gonna see when you come through is, this is a big barrel. You know, I've got a graphic, an actual picture of it, but this is what you're gonna see. That's all glass, so you're able to look straight out on the Palouse, and you'll be able to see everything out on the, on the runway, the taxiway. Ticketing, when you come in, will be off to the right, the rental cars are off to the left. Baggage claim, so this is the carousel, and you're looking at rental cars. So this is where you're gonna exit. When you exit the sterile area, you're gonna go through a set of doors, and the doors will open one at a time, so you can't go backwards, you can only go forwards. Or then it alarms and tells on you, and it'll trap you in there, so you gotta keep going. But it opens up into a pretty nice space. The boarding gate is actually going to look like a boarding gate. The chairs, the furniture package alone is a half a million dollars. But the furniture that's in here will be bolted to the ground, because that's the only way we could make it eligible. But you can't pick up that furniture, you can't lift the chairs. They're, they're definitely heavy enough. But they'll all have power, they all have half tables, they all have the capability where people can put drinks in them, can actually have a space to eat. If you are a university professor, or you, you work with the universities, either one of the universities, their systems are going into this building, so you'll be able to hook into their networks. And we're working with both universities to make that capable.
How about rechargeers, or chargers?
Every seat's got charge, every, they're all powered, every single one of them.
The future is here, I love it.
So, so all of that, everything's got power. I, I think President Schultz put it the best way. It's not when everything's going well, it's when your flight's delayed, what do you do about that? And so this building was built thinking about that, because it happens. This is looking from the main doors in, east of the rental cars. And so the restaurant, written, the main restrooms, all of that is, you're looking towards that area. Airline ticket counters, so the, you can see the entrance, the main entrance to the building is right here, and you'll come in, and they'll have the kiosks set up, which Alaska's trying to go completely to kiosks, and we'll see what happens with, with other carriers as it goes. The wall that's behind the airline is, it's raw concrete. It's the concrete wall that you saw when you were there. They're gonna clean that up, polish it, it stays concrete, it'll be polished concrete. This gives you an idea of the magnitude of this site. That's the new runway, and you can see the disturbance, existing terminals right here. This is how much we are disturbing right now. So it is a large area. I wish I could figure out, make it not do that, but there's a lot going on in there right now. Terminal progress, this is where we started, people started to see it. This is the wall I was talking about, is the concrete wall here.
Is it pouring tilt, or is it?
Yep, this is, this is poured, and it's there. And then the backside of it, well, this is about three months ago. So let's go through where we're at now. This is interesting, because this looks like it's pretty benign, right? There's just slats. Well, each one of those slats is like a Lego puzzle, it only goes one place. So that is all engineered, and what it does is it's, it's soundproof, so when you're standing inside of that, and inside of that tunnel, it doesn't make it sound like you're in a cave. And so it's, it's set up to attenuate the sound, but I didn't realize how complex that was. The whole thing was built like a set of Legos, like you would build a, you know, a semi-truck out of Legos. But each one of those, they're about eight foot long, and they all have a space, and they can't go in the wrong space. And so it's very extensive. This is looking at it now from the apron, so there's pavement on the apron. And you can start to see where the glass is going to be, how it's gonna start to lay out without the, the western portion. This retaining wall, so there'll be a parking lot on the other side of this wall. And it looks down towards the building itself, so you're looking towards the west, towards WSU. And this is the bump out, so that east expansion is the piece that you see to the left. And you can see that all of that system, that roofing system that was shown, that goes all the way to here. So it is very extensive.
So is it where the outdoor portion would go?
Yeah.
And I'm just like wrapping my head around what that looks like. I'm curious how the FAA felt about us trying to go for-
It's not the FAA that's the problem, it's TSA.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
FAA's good.
Yeah, they say do whatever you want, but well-
Yeah, the TSA, yeah, there were a lot of discussions about what we were gonna do and how we're gonna do it. I've got a really good picture here coming up, should I try to show you that? This is the basement level, so you can kinda see how wide this is and this is in full construction right now. But that, that building form, the slats, those numbered pieces, that's that entire roof. And that's the inside of it, they don't, the roof's not on it yet. So there's insulation goes on top of that and a membrane goes over that. This is the piece that you're talking about Haley. So this is outdoor deck. So the decorative fencing, there'll be a patio area and then it'll be screened off where you can't see it from the public side.
So no one can lob me a-
Right.
All over the fence, I gotta pay five dollars for a red bull, okay.
Yeah, $13,000 fines isn't something anybody personally wants from TSA. But it's set up to where it's all glass, it can be seen from the restaurant catering areas, so alcohol could be served in there. We've talked to the liquor control board for Washington State, what are the rules? How do we work that? Cause we want a concessionary that's very successful and having amenities like that are. And then we'll open it up when it's decent weather, of course, we're not gonna keep it, keep it open when it's icy and, and yucky out. But we'll try to do the best we can with it. But it is something that is done at other airports, it's done in Missoula. It's where I got the idea in the first place, was walking out there. And I had the same question, how did you get away with this? But it is a great amenity for passengers, it's something that Tri-Cities is doing now that we're looking at is allowing people to go through screening. Cause you can clear people through screening where they don't have to get on an aircraft. And so you're, the ability for you to be able to go with someone to the gate, that, that is something that we're gonna be able to accommodate.
It sounds like you're making it so that I don't wanna be there just 20 minutes, or what's the TSA cutoff? You're moving, you're moving me into a person that's gonna be here for an actual hour before my flight instead of just being there 30 minutes before the flight takes off, I love it.
We want it for the quality, we want people to enjoy the quality of life that their taxes are paying for.
Yeah.
Aircraft parking apron, so I know you've got stormwater and detention and we got miles of this stuff underneath the ground. We don't build ponds at airports, cause airports and ponds equal birds and birds and airplanes is bad. So all of our detention is underground. There is, for the runway itself, there is a football field worth of piping like this underneath the ground. And now there's more going underneath here, this one's fun. So these pipes are for de-icing collection. So when you back up, you're gonna be pushed back and they de-ice the aircraft, we have to collect all of that. This is 174,000 gallons of storage. So we have to collect the glycol and the snow melt and it goes into this tank. And then we've got equipment that we've gotta buy to pull the, pull the glycol out of the tank, we're gonna use it for dust abatement, cause it will biodegrade. So the sun and the wind will biodegrade it, so it doesn't go into water system. But we have to store it and then dispose of it through the summer. And we're, so we're working with Washington Department of Ecology to figure out how to do that.
I, I do have a question about that.
Yeah.
Would our, would the abatement look different for us if we were doing this all on the Idaho side of things with DEQ? I mean, how much of this is, is Washington standards and us also wanting to do the right thing by the environment and by our water? But like, how, how much of that price tag comes with Washington standards?
The building, there is significant price tag that comes with certain, the energy standards, the energy code that Washington has.
Yeah.
Which is separate than any other state. We're hoping that that turns into actual energy savings.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna know that till we start operating the building. But the de-icing thing is something that's getting, getting more and more-
Standardized.
Probably, yeah. As you see it in Montana, Boise's collecting it, Wyoming Jackson Hall did a whole program on trying to figure out how to collect everything off of the runways, the taxways, all of it. This is a trench drain, you're gonna see, so this is them forming it up, this is what it looks like now. You can see the bump out in the middle, that's that trench drain. And so this is them paving. This is the first time, incidentally, those of the folks that are in here that are into engineering and that kinda thing and have built stuff. The FAA and ITD, WashDOT, they all do test strips when you put down asphalt. And the FAA is extremely stringent about their standards for asphalt. This is the first time I've ever seen a test strip pass the first time. They've always failed, and they brought, the, the asphalt actually came up from the valley, cause everything here was full. But I'd never seen one pass the first time, this is a, it was a novelty. So this is them paving, the progress, they're doing outstanding with a lot of it. Hoffman is the contractor that we picked for the terminal, it was competitively picked. Mead and Hunt is the design and architecture firm. And then M.A.D. Atley is who is building the apron. The synergy, their, their collaboration, their cooperation and their ability to get along. And the fact that they started, especially with Hoffman, we started them into the design early. It is making for the best project that we've been able to have with as many complications that come with a building, it's been outstanding. Passenger growth, we talked about this. 2019, we hit 70,000, we were looking, okay, can we get to that 70,000, we're at 75 already. We are working on additional air service, air service is a slow, slow, slow progress. And it's not something that happens really fast and we've been in the game not very long. Because with the existing, with the previous runway, we couldn't even get in the room to have the discussion. Cause we come to our airports, we can handcuff your operation. So, but we definitely are seeing a lot of growth. Twice daily service to Denver, we are putting effort into that, we're trying to work on Portland. We start back to five flights a week for Boise, start September 7th. And we start a fourth flight, or a third flight to Seattle, September 7th. And so you'll see changes, that third flight to Seattle will be four days a week. So they're not gonna fly it, I think, I believe it's Tuesday, Wednesday and Saturday. But it's that five o'clock, six o'clock frequency where you're not waiting in Seattle until midnight to get back.
Tell me about the Boise one again?
The Boise one starts the 7th and they'll fly that five days a week. I don't know exactly the schedule on that, right now, they've scheduled through September. But they'll fly it every day except for Tuesday and Saturday.
Tony, does the, the new announcement for the Lewiston Airport flying to Denver, does that affect?
Denver or Seattle?
Both.
Both, they do, but that's-
Is it Salt Lake now?
The one they announced was Seattle.
Seattle's what they announced, but that, that actually, from a consumer standpoint, that's competition and competition is good. Especially in the market right now, anybody that's looked at buying plane tickets for any carrier. Plane tickets are awfully expensive. So anything that we get where we introduce competition in the market, that's a good thing for the consumer. It's one flight a day, it fits the need that, that the valley has and what's, that's what they're pursuing. We have multiple frequencies, but it got Alaska's attention, which is a good thing. Anytime that we can, we can introduce a competition into a market. Because the airport's like a platform, it's similar to, you know, the municipality. You build the platform, you let business do what business needs to do. But that announcement, I think they start that service in October. We may see five, five flights a day, which would be normal. As we go into the holidays, Alaska's typically ramped up service. And that may, it may help them look at a decision on either A, providing more service or B, looking at their fares. Which is always good on the consumer side. The more choice you have and the better fare that you can get, that's always a good thing. The development that we're working on, we're gonna continue to, you know, I think Mayor Johnson put it best, you dance with the one that brought you. And Alaska Airlines has been a great partner of ours for many, many, many years. We do have an air service development grant for Denver service, but there's just not availability of pilots, aircraft, all of these things. The Boise flight, I got in there evaluating, it's been as successful as anybody could even guess. Nobody thought that would be 66% load factor, especially a midday turn.
Can you remember what the, cause the sub, the U of I agreed to subsidize if we don't reach X percent of carrier? But I could remember how long the subsidy, like how long our contract for the existing Boise goes for?
With the universities, because it's both of them that are involved in it. And it's a, a deal that they have with the airline. Our part of it was, we had two years that we waived their landing fees.
Okay.
And then two years that we marketed, which is the max that the FAA will allow us to do. We cannot use airport revenue into a revenue guarantee, it's illegal. So any revenue guarantee, other than a small community air service development award that we, we have. We can't put airport revenue into it, but other entities can put private monies, which is typical. Like the ski cities started this, is that's how the ski cities really, you know, the Tellarides and the Aspens, they started putting up revenue guarantees. And now the airlines, that's the normal course of doing business, especially if you're a small community, they wanna see what you're gonna put up to help them assume the risk. But it's like an insurance policy, if you fill, if you fill the aircraft, and it's usually, it's like a percentage of revenue, so it'll be 10% profit. Whatever they don't get to make that 10%, they pull from that revenue guarantee. But the way the communities beat it is they fill the aircraft. But for, you know, the purposes of, of the Boise flight, we need that connectivity. And it's actually done quite well.
And is two years almost up then? I'm trying to remember when it-
The two years, yeah, the two years is, is about up and I believe it's a three-year agreement if I understand right. But I don't know what the, you know, that wasn't part of the deal with the airport, that's between the universities and the airline.
Love it.
If you haven't flown on an Embraer and you're used to the Q400, this is a huge improvement. The first class seats, business class seats, it is a very, very nice aircraft. They're new, now they've got aircraft, the problem is they don't have engines. So there's aircraft-
This is a problem.
Yeah, they're not gliders.
You expect me to say pilots.
Yeah.
Pilots is a struggle, but right now there's aircraft and they're backlogged with engines. Aircraft's built, but the engines aren't there yet. And then the, the last slide that I have is always the fun one, because I keep getting asked this is, well, you did all the work with this runway, you did all the work with the taxiway, what could you land? That showed up. So that is the second largest aircraft that the US Air Force flies. And when it showed up, I got everybody off of their ladders and off of their work, because they're gonna fall off the ladder. As you don't see, there's only two aircraft that sound like that. But you know, as far as what can we, what are we capable of landing, we can land that.
Why did that land at the airport?
Because they wanted to. No, it's a training exercise, so you've seen, you'll see a 737, a Navy 737 quite frequently. And they're coming out of Naval Air Station Woodbee Island. They hit like every airport in the Northwest. But it's training and so it's consistent training. And we're an airport that has a shorter runway, so it's similar to runways that they would use for certain things. They call, they're very polite, they ask for permission, of course, we're gonna say yes. Anytime that you can support the military in any way, shape or form, especially with training, that's important to do. But yeah, it's, it's an amazing thing to be able to see something like that. Our previous runway, that wasn't even, nobody ever thought that that was possible, you would never see an aircraft like that. That being said, we've only ever seen one of them and that's okay. But we've had different military aircraft over the last year and a half that have come and used the airport, because we have an instrument landing system, they can do the training. It's uncongested airspace and it's a safe place for them to do that. I know that was loaded, so, questions?
I still have a couple on my list, if that's okay. You, you mentioned the rental car thing and what we're not able to do just yet for paving the lot and what they need. Remind me, was, with the WSU transaction, their, their old warehouse stuff at the Terra View intersection, is that? I was feeling like there was something about the rental cars potentially using that for storage at some point, or is that coming in handy for you guys right now?
Well, there, there is, we have a place for them to wash cars, which that gets into its own thing. You have to be able to, you have to be hooked into a septic system in the state of Washington to wash cars. You can't just wash cars, it doesn't work that way. Well, that is hooked in and the new terminal is actually hooked into the septic system of the city of Pullman. So it is actually built into the city. And that was one of the things we had to work out with the state of Washington itself. But yeah, there's some means to be able to use that for car washing, so they're not having to bring cars, cause that, that affects your price. And whatever costs a business, bottom line, they've gotta make a profit. Anytime we can get that to where it's more efficient, it helps the consumer and that's definitely in our interest to make sure that we do that. But the remainder of that law, we're, we're talking to private enterprise, we haven't got any private funding yet. So there is opportunities for marketing, there's opportunities for branding, there's opportunities for a lot of things. But we had to flesh out the remainder of the design, which we just got and gave to the contractor last week. So now we know what we can actually show someone to be able to market and, and build around. But we're trying to build the best, most efficient site that we can within the constraints that we have.
And my only other, well, I got two questions. The old terminal, at one point there was like the what abouts or what if, FedEx was on the table, I think, or is it pie in the sky?
A cargo operator would be advantageous to us, I think.
Still, still in the, still twinkle in all of our eye right now?
Yeah, well, it's, it's something that we're, we're working on, it's one of the things where we start another master plan, that's a big focus of that. What do we do with this existing building and how we leverage that existing building to provide another aeronautical service that we don't already have that benefits our region? And cargo is definitely something that, that would benefit our region. When you start seeing the trucks come down from Spokane and how much actually comes to Moscow and Pullman from, you know, Amazon.
Oh, yeah.
I think there is definitely demand for something like that and so we're gonna, we're gonna work on trying to see what we can secure there.
I love it. And my last question is, what's your money gap? Do you, you said, you're not coming for money right now, but what's, what?
We don't have one right now.
Do you need anything right now? All right.
We've, we're designing to, to be within our budget. Our money gap, if we were gonna go and build the rest of the parking lots, probably about $3 million.
Were you able to fund it as you go?
If we, yeah, if we can't find other means to do it, are we gonna come back to the cities of Moscow and Pullman and ask for our money? My gonna, my gut instinct is to say no, cause we have other partners, we have other, other means. One of the best things about having the funding that comes with the FAA, it's the best thing and the worst thing. Cause it doesn't matter if you took $2 from the FAA, took 200 million from the FAA, the rules still the rules and they still last in perpetuity. That being said, it frees up the capital and the capacity for bond, we're not gonna have to bond anything with the runway, we're not gonna have to bond anything with the building. But it frees up the abilities for the counties, the cities and the port district and the other entities, there's so many other needs. The hospital districts, the, the education side of it, water, all of those other needs, they take priority when you can find other funding. We have the constraints, no matter what we do, the constraints have always existed and they're going to be there. So we've just been very fortunate that the funding that we've been able to compete for and win. That just plays into the council's ability on either side of the border to provide other items that are necessary for the things that, that people in Moscow and Pullman need.
That was it, Madam Mayor, thank you.
I feel almost bad asking this question, because you've given us this great thing all about the terminal. I'm gonna come back more to transportation.
Okay.
Do you know if there are talks in place about having a shuttle service back and forth either Moscow Airport, Airport, Pullman to get passengers to and from, so they don't have to park there?
There is discussion, so one of the things that we built into the, into the program is the ability to have a bus service. We're talking to Pullman. And if we can figure out how to make that airport a access point where you could transfer. And then that's, so that's gonna be a discussion between Pullman Transit, Smart Transit, you know, is there a means to be able to do that? But we built it in to try to do it.
Great.
Whether we get there or not and how long it takes us to get there, I don't know. But we, but yes, it's definitely an idea that we're pursuing. And the other one that's gonna happen is the city of Pullman and Whitman County are pursuing, trying to get a turn lane in Airport Road. So to make it two streets, but the airport road's named Airport Road, because the FAA's obligated properties on the other side of the road. So it's gotta be bought out from the FAA, we have to put it into a project. And then they're gonna have to expand to the north side without encroaching onto the airport. But it's complete streets, so it'll have, you watch people walk or they bike out there now and cars are going by at 35, 40 miles an hour, it makes you nervous.
Sure, thanks.
Other questions? I have a couple, what other airlines besides Alaska are you negotiating with?
We are in discussions, so we've had multiple discussions with Delta, United, Allegiant and SkyWest.
Okay, are any of these new airlines requiring the same thing that was required of the U of- Okay, are any of these new airlines requiring the same thing that was required of the U of I and, and Wazoo with respect to guaranteeing a certain number of flights, and they can't lose a certain amount of money without?
It's, I guess the answer to that is it's all a negotiation. It's right, what you try to do with air service development is as they, the pilot shortage starts to get less, and then behind pilots is mechanics. Nobody's talking about the mechanics yet. But as that situation starts to resolve itself, and they find themselves with aircraft, and they're looking for markets, you stay the course with them and have a discussion every six months, even if they blow you off, and we've talked to American too. Even if they blow you off, you don't know that necessarily that they're blowing you off, is they just may not have an aircraft for you. But what you want to do is stay at the top of that board, so when they do have an aircraft, you're a community that they think about. And for us, just being relatively new as a community, I remember one of the first discussions I had with United. We're finishing the discussion with United, and the United rep sat back and goes, wow, he says, I've seen every market, he thought he's seen every market that was in the United States, he said, I never heard of Pullman, Moscow. I didn't realize that we were in a market, because we were never able to have the discussion. But we're, we're a viable market. Our employment capabilities, the fact that we have, we have a lot of leakage, most of our leakage goes to Spokane. But there is definitely an argument to be made for additional air service here. But the constraints, like with the existing terminal, to try to add an entrant into the existing terminal, we're asking for trouble. And so we, we intentionally talk about, okay, we're building a new building, and we're looking at a timeline, we're not putting a bunch of pressure on them, because they're not ready for it yet anyway. So can we talk about something in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, because that's the way the airlines think, they think in that, that length of term, is they publish schedules nine months in advance. And so it's a, it's kind of a different way of looking at a lot of things, but we're at least able to have the conversation, and we have been.
So do you think in twenty twenty-four, you'll be going to Denver?
What's that?
Do you think in twenty twenty-four, you'll be going to Denver?
I think we're going to try for it. I know we're going to try for it, I don't know, it's not a think. But I'll try for anything, so. I push as hard, the worst they're going to tell us is no.
Thank you very mu, any, no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tom. Kyle Steele, looks like he's ready. Stormwater utility, M P D E S, compliance.
Alphabet soup, I love it.
It's hard to follow, Tony, sorry.
Hopefully this is as exciting as the new airport terminal.
I'm sure it is.
I love compliance, bring it on, I'm ready.
Well, good evening, Madam Acting Mayor, council members. We're excited to be here tonight, I'm joined with Steve Schulte, who's our Streets and Stormwater Operations Manager, we'll kind of be tag teaming this. The first part of this presentation, I'm going to focus on more of the regulatory and policy aspects, as well as some of the activities that Environmental Services staff been up to over the last few years, and then Steve will come up and talk about stormwater operations and the activities that they're engaged in. Just a little bit of background, the city of Moscow made application for a Phase Two permit back in September of two thousand nine, actually about a month after I started working with the city. Fast forward a decade, and lots of negotiations, and, and drafting of permits. The city of Moscow received a permit which was effective October first of two thousand and nineteen. The permit expires September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four, so they're effective for, for five years. The permit is applicable to the city-owned and operated municipal separate storm sewer system, which is another mouthful, or, or MS four. The city operates two, operates, owns and operates two different sewer systems. One being the sanitary sewer system, which collects and conveys wastewater to our water reclamation facility, and the second is the MS four, which collects and carries stormwater, precipitation, largely untreated to local water bodies. The permit contains, it's a, it's a roughly sixty-six-page permit, contains a various number of provisions that the city has to comply with. Full implementation of the permit must be achieved no later than April third of next year. Just for the public and some of the council members that weren't here, the city of Moscow was getting ready to implement a utility and associated stormwater fees back in two thousand twenty. But due to the COVID pandemic, the council and mayor directed staff to delay implementation due to the economic uncertainties of the, of the pandemic, so. Last, or almost two years ago, October first of two thousand twenty-one, the, the city actually formed the utility and started assessing stormwater fees. You'll hear me say the permit requires quite a bit, but the permit does require the city of Moscow to engage with key stakeholders to discuss and disseminate information regarding stormwater management, water conservation, of best management practices that people can, can utilize at their homes to improve water quality. And we use a lot of different avenues to implement our public education and outreach program. As you can see, here's some of the statistics that we've compiled since the start of the permit term. And that's Kelly Cooper, she's giving a demonstration of how stormwater and the water cycle interacted. Here's some of the creative art pieces that have been developed. The two on the, on the bottom, the left and the right, those are recent mini murals that have been, you might have seen downtown. They have an art piece on the front, and then talk about the connection between the storm drain that they're kind of marking and the local receiving water bodies. And Ty Thompson, who's here in the back, worked with our arts department and Moscow Arts Commission for, for that project. The city is required to implement and enforce a program to not only detect, but eliminate illicit discharges, and an illicit discharge is any discharge to our system that's not composed primarily of, of stormwater. There are some exceptions, like water main flushing, firefighting practices, groundwater, discharges and things like that. We have a dedicated webpage with contact information shown here, where you can contact stormwater operations or environmental services staff. We will take those reports, respond as, as necessary, and we track those and report those to Idaho, Idaho DEQ as part of our annual report. This picture right here is taken of Hog Creek, there was an ongoing illicit discharge, an oil discharge, and so you can see over on the left, we have some absorbent pads placed out there, so.
How many did we have last year? How many I D D E complaints did we have to? Four? Do we feel good about four? Do we think there's more than four, and four is what we saw?
I mean.
Four seems all right.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, there'd be zero.
Fair.
Stuff happens.
Yeah.
People are unaware of the fact that the storm system is connected directly to the creek, and so.
Yeah.
The city has a, has implemented a dry weather outfall screening program. We have a, a little over two hundred outfalls, just to Paradise Creek alone. The permit requires the city to monitor at least fifty of those outfalls starting next year. But as part of our pollution reduction activities, kind of an enhanced program, we're looking at trying to screen all of those before the end of the, the permit term. We're about three-quarters of the way complete. It's, in, in the, in the summertime, it's pretty hard, that, that reeds, canary grass grows, it's, it's pretty, pretty tall, and Paradise Creek's actually pretty deep in, in those sections, and so there's a tendency to, to fall in there and get stuck. It's definitely a, a team approach to that, so.
Don't go along.
Yeah, take a spot.
What's outfall mean?
It's the, it's the conveyance, the discreet conveyance, like.
Like I'm picturing the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle.
It's a pipe that's discharging the current. It's the pipe that, yeah, and Steve, Steve will show quite a few of them, but it's.
Awesome, awesome.
Thanks, Bill. Our permit requires us to identify if we have any dry weather flows. That meaning that during periods of, of dry weather, if you have dry weather flows, it could be an illicit discharge, ongoing illicit discharge, and so if, if we do identify those, we collect a sample and run it for bacteria and nutrients, things like that, to determine whether it may be human-related.
Can you figure out how to track it back to whoever put this stuff in there?
Yeah, we've, we've, yes, we have, yeah. Yeah, through diet testing, and I think we had one at least this year. So that got, that got connected, so. Or disconnected. A major component of what we've been working on over the last six months, Environmental Services has updating our construction site runoff control standards and a plan review processes. The permit requires the city to have the adequate regulatory framework, the, the adequate legal authority to address stormwater dis, or land disturbances greater than an acre. We've been working with community planning and design, the design engineers, our development community, and really focusing on the pre-construction site plan review process, and where as, as a requirement of an Idaho construction general permit, these sorts of disturbances are required to submit erosion sediment control plans, or what's commonly referred to as stormwater pollution prevention plans, and so we're making sure that development that occurs within the city of Moscow is complying with that permit. We, the city hired a environmental compliance inspector last year, back in June of two thousand twenty-two. And these are a few statistics of what Marcus Miller has been, been up to, four hundred and six routine inspections, eleven discharge, illicit discharge reports, and nine sort of miscellaneous reports, compliance reports, things like tracking and, and way on the road and stuff like that. The city is required to develop, implement, and maintain an escalating enforcement response policy. And that requirement is under the construction and post-construction control provisions, and so we're working on that right now. We initiated, initiated a lot of education and outreach with the development community this year, and we will be bringing a formal policy for the council's consideration here in the near future. And that covers most of my presentation, Steve will come up and talk a little bit about stormwater operation activities.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you for talking about the exciting stuff. God, there's guys like him, so that, there's guys like me that get to play with the big toys.
They're cute up there.
So, yeah, take us to kind of explain from the beginning to the end, real quick, just to cover what it is we're, we're looking at here. The stormwater runoff system is, you know, the snow, rain, the water melting from the snow, hitting hard surfaces and working its way into our, our creeks, rivers, that sort of thing, so. So you can see here, there's an outfall, so that's where the actual water is exiting the stormpipe system, which is leading up here. It's hard to see, there's a little catch basin in there that this driveway is leading to, down to this other catch basin, a storm drain, sorry, there's another term that I'm going to have to. We use all these things so often that I forget. What's that?
Why don't you just call it a drain, not something?
We have to give it fancy names, and I'll get to the why it's called a catch basin. So yes, this storm drain here that picks up the water from the street and conveys it to the, to the creek. So to start off, we've always had stormwater maintenance in Moscow. The street department has always conducted that, previous to the formation of a stormwater utility. One of the problems with, I guess, the street department conducting that is we were limited by the resources, the amount of, you know, maintenance we could conduct. We only had so many man-hours, we only had, didn't have the right equipment or, or the time, you know, to maintain storm to the level that our permit now requires. So we, in October twenty-one, when we started the utility, we brought on our first staff, it was one guy, he was an army of one. Who's back here, joined us tonight, he's the stormwater supervisor. Later on, in the spring of twenty-two, we brought on two operators, so our small crew, a lean crew, just the three of them, and then I get to hang out with them sometimes when they really need a hand. I still have boots. So yeah, over the last fourteen months of, of having those staff, we've tried to take on this Herculean task, that's what we always call it. It, it's a mountain of work to try and get through, just the sheer amount of, of things that have been not under-maintained, but just, we didn't have the ability to maintain them, so yeah, I guess they were under-maintained. But seventy miles of stormwater pipe that we know of, there's more, we just don't have it mapped yet. But yeah, that'd get you from here to Worley, if you want to go for a drive. The other, I guess, stats, we've got ten miles of open ditch, we have over twelve hundred manholes, so that's that point in the middle of the road where other pipes come in, change direction.
It's not an outfall, though.
Not an outfall. And then twenty-five hundred storm drain catch basins, and I'll get to that on the next slide. And nine point five miles of receiving waters, so that's the creeks, rivers, Hog Creek, Paradise Creek, and the South Fork Plous River. And then we have over fifty stormwater detention ponds, those are the, the ponds, you can kind of, uh-oh. You can see here, like, newer developments. Where they, you detain the water that runs off of that development to slow it down to the rate that it would have otherwise left that area prior to development. You guys have probably heard that one before. So yes, the, the crew in the last fourteen months has been, has been busy, right now, we're about twenty percent of the way through cleaning and inspecting the system. That's the known mapped system, we still have quite a ways to go. We started in our problem areas, you know, flood-prone areas and areas that are quite aged, or where backups can cause issues. Downtown is a low point in Moscow, it's near the creek, there's not a lot of fall from, from the downtown area to the creek, it's only a couple feet above. So when we have a heavy rain, there's not enough gravity to carry that water away quickly, so we started there, and then we've also prioritized the South Fork Plous River, that drainage there on the south, that was per our permit, we have to give it a little extra attention.
Steve, I was just going to add.
Yeah.
If it's all right, or, it is lovely that we're talking about the downtown draining conversation, as we've got a workshop coming up about our pie in the sky hopes and dreams for downtown revitalization with streetscape planning, so I look forward to making sure that the stormwater team is heard loud and clear, as we're talking about what these. we're talking about what these infrastructure updates could look like.
Yep. We've been interested in that in that one as well.
Yeah.
So we've cleaned over five hundred catch basins so far, I guess, almost five hundred catch basins. So that's a storm drain, I keep calling it a catch basin. Down here, below where the pipe exits, is what's called the catch. So it catches the debris before it can leave that basin. So that helps, you know, limit the amount of debris that gets into the pipe. Now, you can see, this is that same basin, that same thing. It hadn't been cleaned probably ever since it was put in, who knows how long ago. We're trying to do better. We are doing better. Obviously, we cleaned that one. But here's our our tool. This is our jet truck that we use that uses high-pressure water vacuum to 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 clean and and suck the debris out of those those basins. The jet truck, we did have to name it George, George Jetson. That was what stuck.
Immediately got that one.
Does somebody go in there and just dig it out, then?
So that's where this this is the vacuum tube that can pretty quickly remove that that debris. That's what Dana's crew has been working their way through town as quick as they can.
So we don't know how old that is?
Well, that specific one, the age of it, it's an ITD, so it's probably twenty years old.
Talk to the archeology team.
I'm guessing it's been. It's been cleaned before, but not in some time.
Wait, so what happens when you pull up all the sediment from the drains? Where do you, if we can't, if it's not supposed to be going down the drains, where do you where do you dump your vacuum bag?
We bring it bring it back to the shop and de-water it in a in a spot that it holds all the runoff and lets the water evaporate. And then we take that and haul it off once it's dried and movable, because it's a pretty, it's a sludge, you know, it's wet, clay, yeah.
And you move it to?
What's that?
And you move it to?
To the the dump site.
Oh, okay.
So then, along with the the storm drains, we've also cleaned the storm pipes. So that's where there's a hose that comes off the front of George that goes into the the storm drain, there's the storm lines. And we've cleaned a little over fifty-two thousand linear feet, so ten miles or so of pipe at this point. We still have another sixty miles to go that we know of, but we're well on our way.
That's that's kind of, I guess, what I'm what I'm pinging on a little bit. We don't know how old these pipes are.
We've got a pretty good idea of of some of their age. A lot of the mapping didn't take place until Mount St. Helens blew. There wasn't a need for some of the accuracy that we have now. When they had to clean up that that mess, it required knowing where the where the water ran to. So that's when a lot of the maps, that's what I've heard anyway, is that's when a lot of the maps originated.
So that's what, eighty-one?
Eighty-one?
Really blew up their infrastructure plans.
I lived in Indiana, I don't know anything.
So, let's see. Like Kyle said, a lot of people forget that our runoff runs to the creeks and rivers. So that's something that we assist with. We have the tools to assist with that process, try to limit the effect of whatever it may, whatever pollutant it may be, whether it just be dirty water or, you know, a leaky vehicle, small to large, we're gonna try and keep that stuff out of the system. Pickle juice is another one that's come up that I didn't see that coming, but you never know.
Like during canning season?
That's a long story. We'll get to that one some other time.
Dying to know.
So, yeah, sometimes there's nowhere for the water to go but up, and flooding is something that we've had quite a few times here in the recent past. One of the things that we we've tried, you know, to do what we can to limit its effects, unfortunately, you know, it's it's difficult. The water is gonna do what the water wants to do, and when it wants to melt, it's gonna melt quickly. And sometimes there's, yeah, just nowhere for it to go. But we do whatever we can to assist, you know, with the flooding damages. We've got, you know, our sandbag stations and various programs that we do to try and limit the the damage, but also new stuff that we've been doing, working with National Weather Service to, you know, get their forecasting. We provide them data. We take snow samples to determine how much water is in the snow, so then we know how much of that water might melt as it comes down. And then we've got our own our own gauge at one of the flood-prone areas, so we have around-the-clock alarms if we need to 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 let us know that the water's starting to back up. We can be a little more proactive with the flooding. So far, we've only had this in place since, you know, since Dana came on, so we're still, we've only had one high-water event that we can have here that we've got to play with things, but luckily it went pretty well. Street sweeping is one of the largest activities that we do. It's required in the permit. It's one of the largest permit-required activities, but it that is a a large amount of effort. It's a little over twelve hundred man-hours per year goes into sweeping. And if you remember, we only have two stormwater operators. They they're gonna be doing cleaning or inspecting. We don't have those staff available. So Streets is contracted to do the sweeping for Storm. Our street staff have used one of the three sweepers, and it's usually if it's not snowing, there's a sweeper running to help pick stuff up. So, yeah, we picked up quite a bit of debris over the last couple of years since we've been taking closer notes. Thirty-four thousand cubic feet, that's, what is that? It's almost an Olympic pool, I think, and that's just this year, the volume of an Olympic swimming pool. So I haven't spent that much time in that many Olympic swimming pools, but everybody always uses that.
Steve, I have one question about the our lovely street sweeper. Why, two questions. Do they have names? Do our street sweepers have names?
They don't.
Can we have a contest? Park that thought. I love, there's something here. We had had a couple of, I've seen a couple of comments on social media from neighbors who maybe don't understand how cool it is that we've got great, a great street sweeping team who have alleged that we would street sweep starting at six AM, and I don't think that's the case. I figure we follow our own noise ordinance stuff, and you may hear somebody bopping around in the normal business hour time, but I'm trying to remember what our noise ordinance time for when you may be seeing one of these buddies out and about.
Seven in the morning is when we, in residential area.
Yeah.
Start, but downtown, as you know, the parking restrictions, we do have to start earlier.
Okay, yeah.
Otherwise, there's parking and then you can't.
It's not gonna happen. Yeah, you're dodging.
Where the debris is, even though we we use leaf blowers to try and move it to where we can get to it, we still do have to start a little earlier.
Yeah, which I am just grateful to have an all-star cast of service providers. So that's good to know for us to share with our neighbors.
So that goes to the dump, too, all of that?
Yep. So, yes, after we're done cleaning these facilities, the storm drains and pipes, we do what we can with the equipment we have to inspect them. We've have a couple of toys and and some that we're hoping to acquire, but to actually inspect, look at those pipes, the conditions of the, you know, the manholes, conditions of the storm drains. We use that information to help with, you know, future utility studies and to determine the overall condition of the system, to identify any problems that require immediate attention, and, you know, to gather information for future expansion or just replacement. We've got some pipes out there that are, well, pretty old. And as you'll see on, I think, the next slide, that that picture in the middle, that was a pipe that we recently came across in in another project. We stumbled upon it, and what you see, it's kind of hard to describe it. That's just the top half of the pipe. There was no bottom.
Oh.
That's not super common from from what we've found over the years, but we're just starting to scratch the surface with the condition of our system.
What neck of town was that, do you know?
It was actually the drain line for the, what would be the north-east water tower? So it's over there by Lincoln Public, that area.
So if it doesn't have a bottom, do you just have to go in and put new pipes in there, too?
So that's a, that's that's on our project list now, because, yeah, we're gonna have to find a way to get a pipe back in there.
Remind me, what is the deadline on while this stuff has to be done?
That's what Kyle can, we're we're a bit ahead of the curve on stuff like this, you know. This is just what's gonna convey and help us keep that water clean. We have to find a way for that water to get from where it started to where it's going, and we're trying to help clean it along the path. But but, yeah, as far as the actual condition of that pipe, not really at this point. I guess a direct.
Yeah. And I I think maybe, Maureen, as far as a deadline goes for repairs throughout the system, that's gonna be a multi-decade process. That's something that we've got, we have our initial rate study that was, we we had our initial rate adopted, and that rate was adequate for us to get the equipment and start the work of cleaning, assessing the system, and so that we could start to gauge the capital needs. And really, the next step is to then, with that information, build out a capital plan prioritized based on the conditions that we find. So we're in the discovery phase of cleaning, inspecting, and then with that, we'll be able to build out a capital plan and do a utility, a comprehensive utility plan, just like we have for water and for sewer, where we look at at the needs of that system and then we're able to prioritize those and build out a capital plan for stormwater. And so that will really be the next step that we'll have as we move forward.
That's about what the rest of what I was gonna say. Maybe not quite like he did. You know, Tyler. He couldn't not speak.
I was just gonna ask you what what the weirdest thing you found was.
So, yeah, so far, we've adopted a raccoon.
He does have a name? What's his?
Pipe Panda.
Pipe Panda.
We didn't actually rescue the raccoon. We left him. But that is a little.
Just don't wanna be rescued.
No.
They're not damsels.
The kitten did, however, get out safely, and then a handful of ducks.
Ducks, yeah. I think that was over by where we live. There there, it was amazing how many people were laying in the street that day digging down, trying to save the ducklings.
Over the years, we've, yeah, we've got some pheasant, some quail, ducks, a handful of kittens, I think.
My goodness.
Fish them out. Yeah, with that, I guess I'll give it back to Kyle.
Pipe Panda?
Pipe Panda. I love that.
Yeah, so just in, just real quickly in closing, as I mentioned, the permit expires September thirtieth of next year. We are continuing to check off the list of provisions that we've got to meet during that time. A lot of good housekeeping measures, staff training, those things are kind of ongoing, but but they're a requirement. We'll continue the implementation implementation of the construction site runoff control process review, and we'll be bringing back the enforcement response policy, as I mentioned. And we do have a few minor updates to city code that we'll be bringing this fall to address illicit discharges and as well as some of the updates to the design standards to address temporary erosion sediment control standards as well as permanent stormwater controls. So as I mentioned, we do have to reapply no later than April third of two thousand twenty-four if we want to continue to discharge to the local receiving water bodies. So that will be coming as well. But overall, we're in really good shape from a compliance standpoint. The staff that have worked over the last few years with a condensed timeline have done a great job. A lot of them are here tonight, but, yeah, we're in really good shape. So with that, I try to, or me and Steve would try to address any questions you might have.
I have a question. Remind me, please, are there fines associated with the illicit discharge? I love saying that.
That's very spicy, yeah, it's like.
There are.
I can't remember.
There are fines under the Clean Water Act, and I could always defer to Mia, but there there are fines associated with violations of the permit.
So so do we have fines built in for citizens who are?
We have a misdemeanor charge that would be available. We would need to get law enforcement involved with the investigation and ultimate decision to charge a criminal offense.
But right now, it's more like just a, hey, you can't do that.
Yeah, I mean, our ultimate goal is compliance assistance.
Agreed.
But the permit does require us to have an escalating enforcement response policy. So that could be warnings, you know, verbal, could be formal, could be, as Mia mentioned, the citation, all the way up to a stop work order. So that'll be, that'll be something we'll be bringing to.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Yes. So is the, let me, hopefully, this is a coherent question. Is the permit what allows us to charge the stormwater utility fee? Do we need to, is it, are they tied together, or is there a day where we don't need a permit anymore to do what we need to do, but we're still able to do what we need to do to have like a team of three who are focused only on stormwater discharge? Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
You lost me on the second half.
Like, is the is the permit, is the permit what triggers us being able to use the fee or is the fee?
The permit mandates activities.
Okay.
The city's operating utility and establishes a fee to operate and maintain that utility. But the the permit is the trigger for the requirement for the enhanced services and all the activities we needed to to engage in to comply with the permit that we did not have staff or resources, thus necessitating the generation of the utility.
That works.
Yeah, the the permit does state, I'm paraphrasing here, but that the city must have the financial resources to comply.
Gotcha. So it's all, it's all connected.
How how we comply, Idaho DEQ and EPA have told us.
They write, they write the rules.
It's up to you.
We sign up for the rules. We we have the utility fee there to allow us to be able to play by the rules.
Yeah, just one other point is, is once we're, we we won't be unpermitted again. Like, our permit won't just go away. Once, once, there's not a city under this act that has been permitted and then isn't permitted.
Gotcha.
It's been an expansionary thing that they get, go further and further. It started with larger cities and worked their way on down. So we will always have a stormwater permit in perpetuity moving forward.
Love that.
So why do we have to reapply, then? Is it just more money for the GOB?
No.
The man?
I mean, I I guess I can't say that it doesn't cost us anything, but there's no fee associated with reapplication. It's, it it stipulates in the application what they would like to see, which is an updated stormwater management program document, a map of our system, along with some other things. Over time, in especially in Western Washington, some other states, they have enhanced the control measures that perimeters must comply with. I have talked to the permit writers down at Idaho DEQ, and I don't foresee anything glaring coming up that.
Okay. So is it fair to say we can do it with three staff people? Because the issue is, is if it's getting paid for by a fee, then the question is, do we have enough staff in order to comply with what we need to do?
Well, if we we have more than, I guess I'll let Tyler.
He was already there.
It's a good, I mean, that's a good question, Maureen, and as I indicated previously, that the staffing levels were were put into place to do this initial phase of the program so that we could take that first cut of, we just gotta get these things cleaned and inspected. There are more than just three people dedicated to storm activities at this point. It pays a portion of salaries, for example, in Environmental Services, some of Kyle's, we have some of Ty's, we have, we have Time, Marcus doing inspections, we have some finance people that are supported. And so so there there is a whole team of people that that are supported. But as as we develop the program further, it's entirely possible and probable that that there will be more needs, whether we do that contractually or otherwise. For example, right now, Streets is still not fully compensated by the storm utility for the sweeping activities that take place. Streets is still subsidizing those activities. So so there is certainly, there certainly will be more activities as we move forward, and so then the city will just have to look strategically and bring to the council concepts for how we meet those obligations.
So if I understood you, too, in terms of permitting, is it like a twofold thing? One is to report on compliance, and the second one is to say, what are your future plans?
Yeah.
Okay. Kinda got to put it down here to English.
Yeah.
So talking about updating code for water management, stormwater management is bioswells. Is that something that we're thinking about to help mitigate streams? And I know we've talked about that for a large master plan for downtown, which will help with some things, but in other areas of town also?
Yeah, I I think that I I can't comment specifically on the type of BMP that will get adopted, but the city will be required beginning April third of two thousand twenty-four to, our control facilities be required to retain the ninety-fifth percentile twenty-four-hour storm event. So, which is a pretty, pretty large storm. So, which is a pretty, pretty large storm event. Um, one of those, and it's a retention. It's not a detention standard. Uh, we, we talk a lot about detention in Moscow, but this is actually retention. So you're treating, you're treating that ninety-fifth percentile storm event, the whole entire volume. And then there's detention release rates following that. So there'll be a suite of, of best managed BMPs, those types of, um, infiltration galleries, uh, that the develop, we'll be working with the development community on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Sure.
Is there a way to work towards composting the street sweeping since it's so many leaves? Or is it just too full of other stuff?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. That's, that's a conversation that the Association of Idaho Cities, some private entities have had with Idaho DEQ to, to look into. There are a lot of metals or a lot of other pollutants associated with street sweeping materials. So from a disposal standpoint, um, DEQ hasn't really taken a position on that. And it's been, it's been delayed for quite a while. I mean, we were talking about it pre-COVID, so that would be a great, you know, a, a great thing that a DEQ would like to see, but whether or not there'll be the regulatory framework to do that is, we just don't know.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. We're done.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was cool.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, please.
Yeah, that actually turned out to be way cool.
You doubted it?
Thanks Gina. Steve's portionally.
I know it was hard to follow Tony, but it was interesting, all the same.
But you had kittens. Put it over the top.
Pipe Pandas.
Okay.
And out, outfalls?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any city reports?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. Um, city council reports, Gina.
Okay. Um, I have a lot of meetings coming up Wednesday and Thursday of this week, but I do have the tree commission to tell you about. It's awesome. Um, the, the bulk, I will tell you this, the tree commission, as fond as I am of them, it did take them a little longer to come up with their questions for the citizen commission survey this time. Uh, because they were so deliberate and it was, I sat through kind of the end deliberation with them. They chose their questions. Then we went through and did all the editing and syntax and blah. They're very, very careful about making sure that, and Victoria will love this, that their, that their questions give you data of value rather than just asking, you know, is it great when the sun shines? You know, things like that. And I, I might be being a little facetious, but, um, that was, that was kind of the bulk of what we did this last time. We are also talking about some of the places that they were going to be. They're going to be at the farmer's market. They're gonna, and they were planning what they were gonna take. We ran out within a very short time, uh, the last time we were at farmer's market of handing out seedlings. It was quite a, it was kind of a rush on the table. Um, they're gonna be at Pride. They are, uh, Xena Hartung is actually gonna present a rotary. So I mean, they're, we're getting around. We're trying to get the message out there about trees like, like Moscow needs much more message about trees. We're pretty, pretty big on them, but, um, good meeting, good group and, um, and keep in mind, as you see these trees that draw your attention, if they would be ones that could be good candidates for the heritage tree program. They're, they're, it's a, it's a really cool thing. It's out on our website. Take a look at it. And that's all, ma'am. I will have more next time.
Sandra.
Wow. It's always so hard to go when she has tree commission stuff to talk about. Then I just look really boring. Um, all right. So, uh, Moscow Fire, volunteer fire department. Uh, the students are back, which is great. It's nice to, uh, see them. They're getting ramped up for, um, you know, their trainings and for a party and we had them at Palooza Fest, which was great to see. So excited that they are back and working. I'm sad to say that I was unable to make the last feedback meeting because of the students being back. Um, we had a large dinner in my department that we had to prep for and I just simply ran out of time. So I did message Tyler. I don't know if you got that or not, but I did feel bad missing that because there's a new executive director and I think that was probably formally put in place. And, um, so we're off and rolling there. So excited to get back to that. Um, let's see, we had a URA meeting. And again, things are progressing along. We had some, uh, nice, um, hopeful, hopefully some nice updates on, um, getting some work done. I, I would go into all the weird details. Let's just say if there's some, any, um, issues from water or other, other, um, pollutants, there's an organization that come through and take, and take care of that through grant work. So it won't cost anything or mess up any plans with that portion of the city land. Emory may have more on that. She is also there, which is great. Someone, yeah, it was you, cause you've gone first. So it was Gina. Uh, mentioned Pride. That is this Saturday at East City Park. Um, parade, East City Park event, and then there's a Sunday brunch and then other things, um, coming up. Cause you know, it's not till September, but Palouse, um, Howling at the Hamilton is coming up. Best event ever. It's like better than Christmas. So I'm really excited, um, to see all the dogs and I will smell like wet dog all day. Which means that I've had a really good day when I smell like wet dog. So super excited about that. And, uh, and yeah, that's all I, oh, I will also say just in a work world, cause sometimes we throw that in, um, the students are back. We were able to have a great Saturday of Palooza Fest and Sync. And it's the first time that really has been rolling hard as big as it used to be since COVID. They, we did it last year, but it was sort of this trial, getting back into things. And it was all out this year. So, um, fun event from Moscow. So if you saw those students around town, um, hopefully we'll keep them around for a while. And that's all I have.
What do we have? It's August. It's August. I started, I went to a smart transit meeting and started reading from our July meeting minutes, um, to, using that as our agenda. So that tells you how August has treated me so far. Um, it's been great. Smart Transit, it is, we are very aware of what we should be doing as a transit organization to help with the parking situation at the airport. And it's just tricky because being a bi-state organization, we've got additional eyes to dot and teeth to cross. But I've been really impressed with, um, our new director, Andy Severson, and what she's trying to do to make that happen. Um, so it was a big topic of conversation. She also, uh, tabled at Palooza Fest, which was fun to see.
I talked to her.
Yeah, she's rad. Um, and then Human Rights Commission, we also talked, that was the same day on August fifteenth, they were also getting ready for Palooza Fest. We're gearing up for September, uh, the month of September, which will be, um, our community, the, the month's theme is, uh, belonging and togetherness. And so I'm really excited on September, I'm gonna look at my calendar, September fifth, which I think is the Tuesday after Labor Day. They're partnering with the Palouse Cold Film Society to, for a free showing. They voted on social media. I'm not sure. It was maybe gonna be like The Breakfast Club or Tuong Fu, Thanks for Everything or Sister Act. And I don't know what movie they picked, but they're doing a free community showing of a movie at the Kenmerly, which I love. I'm really excited to see them partnering with a, an, a group that has a good reach with students and trying to encourage some town and gown connections there and what we've been working on through that commission. And I'm trying to think what else. I don't know. It's a lot. I'm taking it day by day, guys. That's what I got.
Julia.
So, uh, I had Arts Commission in the past two weeks. We had, um, a long discussion about questions for the survey that, uh, was really productive and, and thoughtful. And we have a couple of marketing people on Arts Commission, so they were super helpful in designing the questions. And then we had a good presentation from Megan Cherry on the MAC band, the Moscow Arts Commission Band.
Like an actual ba-dum, ba-dum, ba-dum music band?
Yeah, yeah.
Just make a shirt. There are lots of different bands. I wanna make sure.
Kitten Sonic.
Nice.
Brass.
All right.
And wind and help me, I don't know. I'm not a music, anyway. I mean, I do know what the MAC band is, but I don't know. It's like a community band, you know?
Great.
They, there was, um, unhappiness with the MAC band schedule and, um, that was brought forward over the last couple of months and, um, Megan had a good, good ideas for options for the MAC band. So all, I think is well. Yeah. And then participated in our, our neighborhood, our neighbors' Lentle Fest. I know that's Pullman, but you know, it's good to go to Lentle.
Lentils over here too.
It's, it's always good to go to Lentle Fest, um, which was, uh, a lot of fun. I did the five K again. And that is a brutal five K.
Do they give you a pound of lentils for finishing the race?
No, they don't even give you a pound of lentils. They give you a cup of water. It's pretty bogus. Now that I think about it, yeah. And of course Pullman being much, much hillier than Moscow. Anyway, that's what I did in the last couple of weeks.
True.
Heard a couple of things. Um, out of town for Parks and Rec, so I'm not gonna meet that, but, um, looking forward to their report. They went and toured a couple of the park facilities, um, that they're gonna be working on. And so I'll have more this month about that. Uh, for affordable, um, fair and affordable housing, um, great meeting, great conversation, just about things that are coming around. Really nothing to report besides, uh, if we haven't read the letter that they, uh, sent to council, if you haven't read that, um, letter that they sent back in May, or maybe it's really June, I, I just recommend reading it, um, for something that they feel that are important that we look at. Also went to National Night Out on Main Street. It was a great, um, event to see all of, um, you know, folks that support our city, uh, make it safe and, um, education's really important. So, uh, it was great to see that. Welcome back to all our students. And then lastly, um, the mayor did not get his trophy this year, which I was pleased to not. Um, at the golf tournament. So, um, cause I was part of that team and I don't like to lose. I'm not that I'm a great golfer. Um, we weren't last, but if you're not first, you're last. So, um.
You're never gonna be first, buddy. Look at the pool of people you got here, bud.
That's a movie that I'm not gonna say over the record. But, um, anyway, so we, uh, it was great. It was great. Turned to be out. It was a good day spending out in front of a computer screen. So it was good to be on that, of course. So, um, that's all I have.
Okay. I have a couple. Um, the SEC, the, actually same thing. Everybody's getting their questionnaire, their questions, their survey questions done. Um, one of the big things was the tabling and it was, they were a market, at the farmer's market, they did tabling and it was a big success cause they gave out free native flower seeds. And so people were all coming by to see that. And they also gave away materials on climate change and how to reduce your carbon footprint and rebate. So people were really interested to kind of hear, how do I do this? And how do I save money? So that was fun. Um, the URA, um, we did pass our budget. And I want to say that before we passed our budget, our own Victoria Severs, who always shows up at every single one of these URA meetings, came and spoke, um, very positively about the work of the URA and the projects that we've competed, completed and projects into the future. So I want to appreciate that and say thank you. That we are now in the stage of exclusive negotiation agreement with Carly and, um, George Scandless and Carly Lilly on the Sixth and Jackson property, um, which were the, they were the ones that were selected on July sixth. The draft, um, E and A actually is now before legal counsel, Elon Burke. And we should be getting that back to see what they have to say about it. Um, so things are moving right along here and we're gonna start hearing about like a timeline and construction projects coming up. Um, and then with respect to the farmer's market, I, you know, I just wanna say, I'm always impressed at the organization and the dedication of their volunteers. It's impressive. And they are all wanting to learn things. And so the agreement was to send two members to a conference relevant to the farmer's market just to kind of help people understand what we can do differently and better. Um, and they're looking for more con, well, here we go. Anyways, they're looking for a little more guidance for new members in terms of what are the roles and, and for the processes. So I think we're gonna have to work on that one. Um, and, um, they got their survey questions done. And it's gonna be their fiftieth anniversary. And so we got a big deal in terms of a question with respect to that. And, um, anybody who hasn't voted, I think we may still have time to vote. I'm hoping so. Anyways, vote for our farmer's market. It's really fun. Um, and I have no more, oh, the one other thing I wanted to say, the people, the person who came and talked to us at the URA was the guy in charge from the Department of Environmental Quality. And it's the only person I've ever seen show up and say, I got a bag of money. And I'm like, whoa, we are ready for you, buddy. Um, there is some problems with some of the water and they're gonna do all the testing. And because he then has the money to do it, um, that's great. We're gonna get a bunch done in the next year. Um, and there's also a process of trying to move some of the pipes so that the construction doesn't have to wait until all that's done. So you can move it to the outside and there's not gonna be a conflict between construction. Yes. So there we go. Um, anything else anybody has to say? Go to the wall? Okay, we're done. Move. Do we move? Adjourn?
So moved. Yep.